Great, welcome to everybody, the full house this evening, to this planning board meeting, Wednesday, March nineteenth, twenty twenty five. First item on our agenda is roll call tonight. We have Mike Costello, we have Ashley Case, we've got Lisa Buck, and myself, Phil Ruck, we've got Doug McIntosh, Tom Beckett, Bob Bear, and Krista Switzer down at the end. Next up is acceptance of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Very good, and second. Any edits, comments? Do you have none? All those in favor? Jessica's not with us this evening, so you're minding the votes.
Yes.
Good. Uh, next up, approval of the minutes of January fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Take it a motion. Take it a motion, please.
So, second.
Very good, second. Uh, edits?
I have a couple of things.
Very good.
Um, page eight. The very bottom line. We have, we're talking about planting a one inch caliper tree to be planted no nearer than five inches to any pot lot, lot line. I think we need to change that to feet.
Good call, good call.
And then on the very last page for adjournment, it was seconded by Ashley Costello.
Related to Ellen.
Was that Mike or was it Ashley?
Who wants it? Do we need to go back to the video? You guys remember what you did in January? Good, thank you. Any other comments? All right, all those in favor of the amended minutes? Good, next up, we have, uh, new business this evening. We have two public hearings. First one is a minor site plan amendment of RSU twenty six for the addition of field lighting and a retaining wall along with drainage improvements to the Orno High School soccer field located in fourteen Goodridge Drive, tax map twenty seven lot twelve, and the medium density residential zoning district. Uh, how we usually go about this is I'll invite the applicant up, but typically, our town planner, Isabel Oxley, will provide a summary for the the audience, and then we will ask the applicant to add to that if there's anything to add. Isabel, you're up.
Mr. Chairman, uh, so I'm technically in a butter and I've donated to this cause, my wife and I, so I feel it'd be best if I recuse myself for this, uh, this item.
Uh, agreed? Yeah. All right, Isabel?
Uh, okay, perfect. So this, uh, this project again is a project of the RSU. It's a minor site plan amendment to their previously approved site plan back in February of twenty twenty. They are proposing to install athletic field lighting at the soccer field, um, which is generally the area of that red circle up at the top, as well as a retaining wall and some minor corresponding drainage improvements adjacent to the soccer field. This is located in the MDR zoning district and is tax map twenty seven lot twelve. Um, this is the overall site plan. You can't see a ton here, um, but essentially I'll point it out to you with my cursor. So the retaining wall is proposed to be here, sort of adjacent to the, um, ice rink area. And then at each of these corners, uh, where my cursor is moving slowly is the area where, uh, the lighting is proposed to be installed, and that hash line that you're seeing is underground conduit. And that's sort of the extent of it. Um, I do have a lighting plan that I can show as well if you, uh, if there are questions about that as we go through our review. So with regard to some of the issues that the planning board likes to see, in terms of buffering and screening, there are no specific buffer strips required under section eighteen one twenty six. Um, also, I just wanted to note that given the, that the adjacent impacted property owners have signed agreements regarding the use of the lights, staff doesn't necessarily recommend the additional buffering or screening as required for this project. Uh, as you sort of saw on the site plan, there is some limited vegetated buffer between the field and the adjacent residential properties. In terms of natural areas, of course, we all know that this is currently developed as a schools complex. The proposed project contemplates improvements to the existing soccer field, um, located sort of on the northern side of the lot, and the proposed lighting is obviously to light the field. Wetlands were delineated for the entirety of the project site back in February of twenty twenty, although I should note that none are located within this development area. And the development area is also not home to any critical natural areas, any significant wildlife habitats, uh, any fisheries, any endangered plant or animal habitat, unique natural communities, or sand and gravel aquifers, all from available state mapping. And disturbances are really limited to the already developed areas adjacent to the proposed soccer field. There's also really not a lot of, uh, disturbance going on. It's sort of minor grading for the drainage improvements and then the installation of the lights. And there is no disturbance to or removal of trees proposed with this application. With regard to traffic access and parking, um, increases in vehicular traffic or parking needs as a direct result of this application are not anticipated. In the February twenty twenty approval, a waiver was approved by the planning board for the full traffic impact analysis, just so you're aware of sort of the history. And then, of course, access is going to continue to be from Goodridge Drive. With regard to drainage, stormwater erosion control, the proposal is for the installation of lighting features and that retaining wall. The town's engineering peer reviewer has reviewed the proposal and noted that the drainage is fairly limited, uh, to outletting the under drain, which is a standard part of the wall design. Um, this should not present a significant amount of flow and isn't a significant impact to warrant added stormwater management design, uh, for the overall site beyond what was previously approved for the project in twenty twenty. And then erosion control specifications, uh, will be implemented, uh, in accordance with main DP's best management practices manual. And then with regard to lighting and signage, which is of course the biggest part of this project, there is no signage proposed, but so I just want to give a little bit of clarification here. Our lighting standards have some conflicting standards, so the project is an athletic field. It has to be designed to meet state statutes, which is referenced here, but in order to meet the state regulations, uh, the applicants do propose light spill on adjacent properties, which, as you're aware, typically wouldn't be something that is allowable. So in order to, uh, address that issue, the applicants, uh, had the impacted adjacent properties, which I can show on the photometric plan that was submitted, sign a community lights use agreement, um, and that agreement specifies a, a variety of conditions, including providing contact information, but also notes that the lights will not be used after nine PM and before sunrise. And then, of course, with regard to utilities, there are no impacts to the existing sewer and water supply, just given the nature of what's being proposed here, and the proposed new electric conduit will be undergrounded consistent with ordinance requirements. There are a number of requested waiver items, or I should say a number of items that have been determined to not be applicable based on the proposal, and given that we already reviewed this, uh, the overall site back in twenty twenty, uh, so those are detailed in my review memo, and just to give a highlight, we are generally in agreement with these items. This is a fairly minor project. And then in terms of recommending conditions, we are recommending approval of this project with our four standard conditions. So the approval is dependent on the plans contained within the application, and any changes have to come back to the planning board. Requirement to obtain a building permit from the code enforcement officer, uh, erosion control measures that I mentioned. Our standard noise condition, which references article two of chapter thirteen related to noise control, um, this is the, uh, section that regulates decibel levels that can be heard at adjacent residential properties. And so this is a standard condition, but, you know, noting that the applicants and any of their contractors are well advised to familiarize themselves with that section of the ordinance, um, and that that's usually a complaints driven section, uh, to the code enforcement officer. And then two additional conditions. So, uh, just a note, there is a portion of the retaining wall, uh, that's sort of on the adjacent town owned portion of the property, and so they will be required to execute an easement with the town and provide evidence of filing, uh, prior to the start of construction. And then as an ongoing condition, uh, the lights will be turned off beginning at nine, and this references the condition that they've already sort of placed upon themselves with their community lights use agreement. And that is it for me. Um, the applicant is here to answer any questions, and I am also happy to answer questions as well.
Thank you, Isabel. Would the applicant want to step up if you have anything to add to that summary?
My name is Doug Reynolds, uh, with Coral Palmer, representing RSU twenty six.
Is your mic on?
There we go. Um, let me start over.
You do.
Okay, okay, I'm loud. Um, I'm here representing RSU twenty six, um, and Isabel pretty much, um, did everything, said everything that I was going to say. The only thing that I was gonna, um, I may want to add for her, um, if I can share this correctly, um, is that, um, lighting plan, there we go, um, with the property lines, um, kind of depicted, this, this, this figure is not in your package. I put it together for, for this evening's presentation. Um, and, and again, the, the, the red area shows the affected, um, properties, all of which have signed, um, agreements with the exception of the last one down here, uh, Mrs. Payne, um, and she has indicated she didn't want to sign the agreement, but has no opposition to the project. So, so again, that, and I think if you look at the lighting from the, uh, the hockey rink, it's going to have more effect on her property than, than we are. Um, so, so again, that's, that's where we're at, um, relative to, um, little bit of backstory. Uh, we, we met with staff, um, two years ago at this point, went through the, the ordinance Isabel mentioned, how it was difficult to meet both at the same time, was just, we went through probably at least four different suppliers, what lighting suppliers, trying to get the photometrics to work, and everybody just kept saying, it's not going to work. We finally went to the, it came to the conclusion that the only way to do this is to get these agreements with the butters, um, and then we, and then we, um, we got the, the best lighting possible with the, with the lowest numbers, um, as you can see on that property line. So, um, that's all I have. I know, uh, Meredith Higgins from RSU twenty six wants to give you a little bit, a more additional backstory.
Good evening. Um, a, a few things, um, just that Meredith Higgins, RSU twenty six superintendent, um, technically, kind of, I, I had a hard time following some of the, uh, engineering terminology around lighting and foot candles and all of those measurements. And one thing that I learned, though, is that the numbers that you see on this drawing take into account, uh, do not take into account any of the tree line. And we, you know, asked and asked, can you give us readings that, uh, would reflect the tree line that's there? And, um, aside from coming and putting up the lights, they say it's really difficult to measure that because vegetation changes through the course of the year, and it's difficult for their, um, I guess, software programs to contemplate that. Looks like a entrepreneurship opportunity for any students in the audience, uh, if you're so inclined with engineering skills. The other thing that I would just say about the, the reason I think so many people are here tonight is, um, this started as a, as an effort from our, our stakeholders wanting, wanting this project to be elevated in the district on our capital improvement list. And so they really came to us with a fundraising plan, and so, uh, I think that's why you see so much passion behind the project, and we're really excited, um, of the possibility because of what it offers, um, both students and the community. And I would say that, and, and this was probably in your materials, and we, we talk about it as the soccer field, but it's also our Nordic, um, complex. And so it serves not just soccer, but also the Nordic program, um, as much as we have snow, we, we got it late this year, but it, it serves not just our school program, but also the community program and the youth, um, the, the farm program that, um, you know, helps students at an early age have access to that, that sport and, and have a, a space nearby to train. Um, they've been wearing, um, what are the, yeah, headlamps out on the, uh, course, and it's, it's just, you know, not as safe as we'd like it to be. Um, so I just wanted to give that backstory. Um, there's been a lot of fundraising. The district also is a part of the financial, um, uh, financing the project, and will be, um, overseeing the project as it, um, as it comes to fruition, hopefully this summer. So we have, we're available for other questions if you have them.
Very good. And just so everybody knows, we're going to limit questions to the planning board first, and then we'll open up the public hearing once we have a few things ironed out. So questions from the board? I, I have a, a few. All right, so it mentioned the retaining wall. There's hardly any detail in your plans about that wall at all, how tall it is. Uh, there's no grading associated with that. It's right on that property line, so I'm just curious on how you intend to do that. I mean, my daughter played soccer for Orno for a lot of years, so I know that, that area, and there's stands there, but I was looking at, you got, what I'm assuming is the away stands, and then you've got that retaining wall, like, right behind it. So I was a little concerned depending on how high that wall is, uh, if that's a safety, safety issue.
Yep, yep. So the idea is that that retaining wall will help us also level out that area to have more stands, or replace the stands that are there in terms of what's on top of this area? Um, and to do that, you know, we were advised, we really need a retaining wall there to build that area up and have, um, you know, proper.
That's, that's exactly it. It's, it's, it's barely two, two feet tall.
Okay.
It's, 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 it's just enough. Right now, if you've been over there, the slope drops off. We're just, we're just pulling that back a little bit to give it more standing space. That, that, that's, that's, that's all it is. And the, and the grading, um, again, I know you, you understand grading. It, it's.
I just saw, without any detail, I was trying to figure this out, because in your notes on that site plan that you're looking around, it says, uh, contractor shall provide design including global stability stamped by a main licensed engineer.
Yeah.
That raised red flags with me. If you're telling me two feet.
And, and it's, and it's really, and then they, that's just our typical note, that they, it's, it's, it's really, it's only, um, it's only two feet high, um, at the most. And, and again, it's just, just enough to get that flat back there.
So just out of curiosity, because I was going to add that, seeing that note on your plan.
Yep.
That was going to be added, Isabel, potentially to our list of conditions, because if I see that a contractor has to provide a stamped plan, that would have to be on the record for the town so that we're covered. It doesn't sound like you're going to need a geotech engineer to.
No, it's going to be, it's, it's going to be, you know, three courses of Krick Keystone or, or, you know, one, one level of the, the, the ready rock, that's even need that.
Yep. All right, so I just want to, so that this note is not really valid, then?
No, not really.
Okay, are we okay with that, Isabel?
Is this something that could just be removed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, I prefer to do that.
Yeah.
That one raised red flags. Uh, so it's a petty thing, but so you're grading out for the away stands, but you're not improving the home stands?
Well, that's actually supposed to be all of the stands.
Yeah.
Uh, it's preferred to have all of the spectators across the field from the, um, so we hope to.
Folks ever sit there, they're always the corner.
Yeah, right. So we're going to try to retrain folks and have larger seating areas over there, so there could be more seating, um, and have, you know, an area that's designated typically for home in a way. Um, I'm sure there'll still be the people bringing their chairs and sitting off to the side, um, but we're probably, we're not going to have stands on the other side of the field anymore as we've had in the past. There just wasn't enough room over there to have more stands with the drop off, so we can, we're actually getting new stands that have more capacity to use in this area.
I know it's not included in this plan, but as somebody who stood on that sideline all the time, I wondered, uh, so can you describe how you selected? I just want to make sure we know how you selected those six slots that you're calling impacted.
Yep, yep. Again, those, that, uh, the, the numbers that you see on this plan right here are the photometrics, the foot candles.
Yep.
And then those are the foot candle numbers on the property line, which again is the ordinance that, again, we're not supposed to exceed. So again, you can see the, um, the zero point one up here on the, the sewer easement property, which is, you know, this, this is a sewer easement property, so it's a point one, and again, it goes up higher, uh, to get to the glance, um, and then starts working its way back down again. Again, we're down at point seven, point three, point two down on, on Mrs. Payne's property. So that, once, you know, any, and the numbers beyond there are zero. So therefore, again, there was no need for, there was no need for an easement, there was no spillover.
Thank you. Uh, next up, in your agreements, you talk about, so it's four, four feet high, no spillover, but then in your agreements, you're talking about eight foot candles of direct illumination. Do you have a line? I'm just curious where your model shows eight foot candles to, to see what that impacted area is.
I don't think there's anywhere that shows.
It was just to be conservative in case the lights went in slightly higher.
I'm going to need you to step up.
Yeah.
Brian McGill, Chair of the RSU twenty six board, who was part of negotiating the, uh, impact agreement. We just put eight in, which was slightly higher than the photometrics in case there was any error in the photometrics, and when the lights went in, just we wanted to be upfront with the, uh, with the, the neighbors that this was, you know, a, a calculation and an estimate, and we didn't want to have to redo things if it was just a couple foot candles over, but there's no current calculation that shows anything that high.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Here it's, it's a town owns, I'm just looking at the parcels too. And so you've got the easement, so you do the construction, put in the wall, but I'm looking at how close that is to, to the town line, so there's that random, it's that little, the rectangle parcel there that.
So that is. This parcel, that is the easement, that's the easement that we're going to be getting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
That covers, yeah, like you said, the construction, erosion control, all that, so you're not spilling in the adjacent property.
Correct.
Uh, running out of questions for me, so I think I covered it. Anybody else before I open up public hearing?
In the event of a, a sale of impacted properties, obviously, this isn't an easement, it's an agreement that probably doesn't convey with the sale of property, is there a plan in place to kind of extend that to the next owner?
We did not put that into the agreements. I think a property owner could share the agreement with the subsequent buyer, and, you know, they could reach out to us for information. So, uh, you know, the, the agreement is made, you know, in good faith with property adjacent owners, so, um, you know, there's, there's not anything written in the agreements that outlines that, no.
My question, seriously, uh, another one, um, you said the lights would be off at nine o'clock. What if that game went into extra minutes?
Yeah, I asked that same question when, um, the, the time was originally brought forward from the folks who, you know, run games and such, and we added that padding to our nine PM time, so the, at the time that I was originally given was, was it eight or eight thirty, Mike? Eight thirty? And I said the same thing you said, and so that's where nine o'clock came from. So we've added in some flex time, knowing that things don't always go as planned to that.
So again, just to be clear, RSU staff is going to be responsible for controlling all the lights on off. So if somebody has a complaint, I see in the agreement, they can call you up. Is there any flexibility? Um, this is a packed house, that's a pretty large neighborhood over there. Uh, is there any agreement or any recourse for people that might not be in those six identified lots? If the lights are on, or if there's issues, I'm just asking. That's a pretty big neighborhood, and those poles are, what, seventy feet high? Just, just curious.
Uh, they're sixty feet, and, I mean, we could certainly give the same contact information to, to other neighbors, but I, you know, I think the, the impact of people outside this red zone is quite minimal with the design of these lights, which is very different than the design of, say, the hockey rink lights that I think are what people are accustomed to have feeling impacted by. So the design of these lights, I think, is going to feel much different for, um, neighboring properties than, than maybe what they have experienced with the hockey lights, which are older and, you know, aren't shielded and such. But, I mean, we could certainly give the same contact information to other adjacent property owners, but I guess there, I, I feel like there should be a limit to how far out that might.
Yeah, typically, if something meets our ordinance, but if there's enough concern by residents, I'm just thinking ahead a little bit, just wondering, because you've identified six parcels that have an agreement, and then that the, the lights, in theory, people are going to see them farther away than that, so I'm just curious what you thought.
Yeah.
Very good. Other questions? All right, I'm going to open up the public hearing. We have a pretty full house tonight, and I'm glad that you're all here, and I'm going to invite you up to the, the podium to mention, you know, what, what you'd like to talk about, whether you're an opponent or proponent of this project. Please keep in mind, because we have a lot of people here, that just not to be repetitive, just to, uh, provide enough time for people to speak. So this board will hear you if we understand your concerns, just please try to not repeat the same, same message over and over again, so. So please, if you would step up to the mic and tell us who you are and what you want to say.
My name is Don Joseph. Uh, I see a lot of students here. I know a lot of these people in the audience. I taught with them, administrators as well. We abut the house, we bought a house about eighteen, nineteen years ago. We abut the parcel that is right on the edge of that pink area.
Yep.
Okay? And, uh, we do have some concerns about the lighting, not about, I'm not anti-stalker, I'm not anti-cross-country skiing. My wife and I, um, have given over twenty thousand dollars to Orno High School in various forms, okay, out of our own pocket. I say that not to brag, but I, we are certainly, uh, promote high school athletics at Orno. I was a high school teacher for over forty years, my last twenty-two at Orno High School. That gives you a reference, that I'm not anti what goes on here. But what concerns me greatly is the lighting, okay? Uh, seventy, seventy-foot poles, it was nice when they made the renovation of the high school and they put a line of, uh, lights along the road that goes to the football field. Uh, it was needed, we got that. We bought our residence eighteen years ago. We knew that there were football games, at least four, maybe five, if there's a playoff game at the end of the street. That was accepted. But it seems as though, over the last several years, there's been an intrusion or an encroachment of lights. The parking lot lights, needed. I'm not. The parking lot lights, needed, I'm not knocking that, okay? We can see them from our house. The hockey light, rink light is like a full moon every night. And when it's, when there's a lot of snow on the ground, it comes right in our living room, right in our kitchen. And it's on sometimes until ten thirty, eleven o'clock, okay? Uh, the seventy-foot lights, poles, the upper left-hand pole is right on the, right near edge of our property. The other poles are gonna be shining light, they're gonna come off the snow, I hear cross-country skiing. Good for you guys, I don't, not, not opposed to that. But the lighting for me, in where we live, is a problem, okay? And I don't think you can diffuse that with these arcs, because it's gonna come off the snow and it's gonna go right into the neighborhood. So it is, it is a big thing, okay? Yes, the five or six pink areas that you've got shaded for being impacted, it's, it's more of an impact for other, other people as well. So again, I am not anti soccer, cross-country skiing, as I said. We've been very generous with school, we've had a great, a great career there. But it's the lighting that's a problem that I have, okay? I figured, um, seven thirty, eight o'clock till maybe six thirty, seven o'clock, except for the four nights with football, there's gonna be a lot of activity, okay? But it seems as though now there's more and more activity that's around Mountain View Drive. And I, I have a concern about that as a, as a resident of here. And that is something that's gonna be permanent. These light poles, you're not gonna move them up and take them down at the end of the season. It's permanent. And that's, that's, that changes our neighborhood, okay? Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Others?
Hi, uh, my name is Laura Mitchell. I'm, um, on the board of Friends of Orno Schools. It is a new nonprofit that, um, parents and community members launched, um, in February of twenty twenty-four to start raising funds and supporting projects that benefit the Orno school system and the students and kids in our community. And this was the first identified project that, um, we began with. We have raised seventy-seven thousand dollars strictly from parent and local community support to make this project happen and will continue to raise, um, whatever else is necessary as we finalize, uh, costs of, uh, retaining walls and drainage and, and poles. Um, I do wanna note that the poles are seventy feet, but they're gonna be in the ground for part of that, so they're not actually gonna be seventy feet tall. I wanna explain a little bit about why, um, this project was important for our community. I actually graduated from Orno High School. I played soccer on that field growing up. And back when I was in high school, that was a long time ago, the football field was lit up. So it's all boys that play on the football field and it's co-ed soccer, it's co-ed Nordic. There's no lit space when we live in, um, an area of our, of our earth that gets dark at four P M. And there's not co-ed lighted space for girls to do sports. And so that was kind of a driving factor for me in trying to think about this project and whether it should be elevated as an important one for our community. I'm also a coach for the Penobscot Valley Ski Club Ski Farm Program. And it was one of the first, um, activities that my kids got engaged in when they were little, um, when we moved back to Orno, um, five or six years ago. There's about a hundred little kids from about seven to twelve years old that gather in the pitch black, it, through the winter on those fields to Nordic ski. And it's simply not safe. There's pickups, there's drop offs with adults and you're matching kids up with people in the dark. And it's really the only way and time that these programs can happen outdoors. And at a time when youth mental health is plummeting, I think any opportunity to support kids being outside, being active in a way that embraces girls and boys should be paramount in a community like Orno. And so there's been an extensive amount of community engagement. And I would love it just to kinda get a read of the room. Who is here with Orno Friends of Schools in support of this project? I, I'm hoping that some people will choose to speak, but I wanna give you an idea in case all of them do not choose to come up and speak, that who's in the room to support the project? Uh, so there's been a lot of planning, a lot of conversations with neighbors and a lot of very detailed work with lighting engineers and engineering companies to, A, use the highest technology of lighting that would, uh, maintain dark skies and be filtered down and directed onto the field with shading on the lights, um, to really be aimed strictly at the field as much as possible and has as little impact as we could, um, on the neighbors. The town ordinances are extremely unique in this area. And as was mentioned before, multiple engineering and lighting companies were not able to really pull the onion layer back and figure out what this ordinance means and how it would be measured. And so this was what was, um, available in terms of measuring the light impacts was the, the light at the property line, so that's what we went with. Um, I, we have heard complaints about the hockey lights and they've been kind of a guidepost for us in what not to do. Um, it should be very clear to the board, the hockey lights are town lights. They do not belong to the school. They do not abide by ordinances that we are trying to comply with. And, um, w- we have tried to separate ourselves from the fact that they're left on light, that they, um, do produce a great deal of glare. We are working hard to, um, have a, uh, use policy that is very limited for a limited number of games in the fall, for a very kind of early evening, um, five to seven ski opportunity, once or twice a week when there's snow and groomed, uh, trails there. Um, the, in the bulk of the year, the lights will not be used at all. Um, so I just wanted to kind of frame a little bit of the, the background around this.
Thank you. Uh, so might as well address this now. Could you, I saw that there were limitations in the agreement, or I think in your application package. Could you elaborate for the people in the audience? Because we've just heard some concern, they're not one of the six lots. But could you, uh, highlight the, no pun intended, the, the limitations that, that you proposed? Because, because I, in the packet, you talked about there's seven home games and then so many other events. I just, I wanted people to understand what you're proposing for light usage there.
Right, it's so mainly we're, um, asking for, um, two seasons of use, but within those seasons, quite limited in terms of the lights. Currently, all of our soccer games and practices have to end by, you know, dusk because we run out of light. And often that means we run out of, um, game time for the games we're trying to accomplish in an afternoon. And so, um, one of the, um, reasons for the lights is to be able to finish games and then also to move a select amount of games to the evening hours to allow, uh, for that under the lights experience and also allow for more parents to be able to make it to games. Sometimes it's hard to get off work. Um, and so we anticipate, uh, it's in here that we have, um, uh, at the high school level, uh, four teams of boys and girls, JV and varsity, uh, teams. And so those are the teams that would primarily be using the light, uh, at night. We don't anticipate using the light much for practices because practices are more convenient typically right after school. However, sometimes with weather or, um, competing events, we might, uh, at times choose to use the lights for practices, but that would be more the exception than the rule. Um, and then for really probably just a select game or two for our middle school program, because it's a special, considered special to play under the lights, um, for, for really any event. But, you know, for soccer, it's, it's a special opportunity. Um, and then with the Nordic program, we don't host evening events for the school program and the, and the school, um, practices are right after school. So the Nordic, um, use would be, as Laura described, a couple of nights a week for the, the youth, uh, program is, is what we anticipate the lights for through Nordic season. So, um, we're not talking every night of the week for sure. And we do anticipate that it being, um, just a select number of the games for high school and just maybe one or two for middle school.
Thank you.
Is that what you were hoping to hear more about? Okay.
What I wanted to hear. Please, yeah.
Emily Hildebrand and I run the, um, Ski Farm Program. And it's really just one night a week. And this year, I think we managed to get out there six times. There's really, the snow is going away sadly, so, um, this will just help us get out there a little bit more. But really, it's totally snow dependent and it's just one night when we have snow, one night a week, I mean. So you're looking at six nights a year when we'd have the lights on reflecting off the snow. If that helps, it's not a, not a huge impact, not a lot of time.
Very good, thank you. Other comments?
My name's Catherine Thibodeau. Uh, I am a, uh, proponent of this project. I am a member, a, a board member of Friends of Orno Schools. Uh, I am also, um, uh, affiliated with Orno Schools as Orno Boosters. Um, and I also serve on the Comprehensive Plan Committee for Orno with many of you. Um, and so, um, I, I think, uh, some information that we've learned in that process is important to this conversation and that is, um, just overall looking at the health of Orno Schools and Orno sustaining a strong, um, educational op, uh, opportunity for, uh, for our citizens. Uh, I have three children, they all graduated from Orno Schools. My oldest started halfway through kindergarten. Um, and I, um, have friends all around the country, all around the world. And I, you know, I always say it in every form, I think Orno Schools are the best schools. I think it provided the best opportunity for my children. They are very different learners, um, and they all, um, are very successful in college. Three kids in college right now. Um, but anyways, in the comprehensive plan process, we've learned that the, that, um, the homes, uh, occupied in Orno uh, have, uh, are dropping considerably in, in having family occupied homes. Uh, we also know that the Orno Schools are child, having challenges attracting, um, sending students. Uh, and I, so I think as a community, we wanna do whatever possible to be able to have a vibrant school community and having the ability for, um, female students to have some parity. And I have two boys and a daughter. And so, uh, I witnessed kind of the experience of boys and girls going through, uh, all student athletes going through the school system. So, you know, that's one of my driving factors. I no longer have children in Orno Schools and I'm here tonight, um, to support this project. So I think it goes beyond, um, people who are immediately impacted, uh, with their students in the schools. And, um, I hope you take that into consideration, thank you.
One clarification, so heard seventy feet, not from you, sorry. Before I lose that thought, uh, we've heard seventy feet. Meredith, you correct me to sixty feet. How tall are they?
What really matters, it's sixty-foot mounting height of the lights.
Mm hmm.
They are, they are going to be at sixty feet. The light, the, the pole may go up a little bit beyond the lights, but it's sixty-foot mounting height. And that's what the design is based on.
Okay. Other comments?
Teddy Jane Colville, fifteen Mountain View Drive. Dawn's my husband. I was on the, uh, school committee three years. I grew up in this town in the sixties. My dad was coach and teacher here. Um, this is my, my home really. Now we live on fifteen Mountain View, see a lot of my friends here. And the thing is, I gotta take it back a teeny bit. I'm a high school athlete, collegiate, former collegiate athlete. Ice hockey was my thing and field hockey. Um, so the parity, a gender thing, the lights are on the rink. I've helped Megan this year, uh, flood, and I'm all in favor of that. But the lights are a problem. How many people here live in the vicinity of the soccer field? Raise your hand, actually live too. And I represent that Mountain View Mahaney, uh, development area. There's not one of my neighbors that is in favor of this because it is blinding in the wintertime. This is not a ski resort. It is, the snow is obviously white. Any light, and you don't even have like a, 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 a prototype that we could see. How many lights are there gonna be on these poles? One candle foot or whatever it is, what is, what is the brightness of that? Yes, the lights on the hockey rink are a menace. People, I've, I've asked Megan many times to turn them off and the timer's not right. And I get that. And look, I wanna be out there at night too, but not late, late, late. And it's freezing cold, freezing cold, and I don't care if we have snow or not. I wouldn't want my little kids out there below freezing in the winds that we've had. So lighting that area at night, it's bad enough that we have snowmobile headlights at eleven P M. or whatever it is. I get it, they wanna do it when it's the coldest, but we put up with that all winter long. And there's no vegetation as a buffer. And you've said, oh, no buffers. There's no trees, there's no leaves, there's no bushes. It's bright and you are talking about having families move in? They will move out because that is not what we, twenty years ago about, we bought that house. And I know what it was in the sixties. I know, it was fields and people had to pick rocks just to play baseball or softball. But this is way too much. And the lighting from the school, I, I love all the, all the improvements. But that, those lights on the back of the school now are just blasting into that whole neighborhood. And that's, it's like enough. And when you say you don't have the technology to measure that because of vegetation, la, 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 there is no vegetation. Measure the, measure what it is with bright white snow. And I don't, I just think, look, there's lit areas up to Humane, a mile away, that you can go if you wanna get skiing at night, go ahead. I mean, I use the trails too, but I'm, I'm not gonna go at night. I'm not gonna have a program at night, especially for little kids. I mean, from five to seven, come on, eat supper and go to bed. I mean, but the thing is, is that I think since no one is here from the neighborhood, that is a telling thing. I know some of the people may be watching tonight, uh, via, via the Zoom. But nobody wants it in our neighborhood. It's just like, like, are you kidding me? Stop it. Uh, and if you want a parity, let's fix up the soft, softball field. Put lights there, fix up the backstop. Not level the soccer field, maybe part of it will be leveled, but you know, like you said, I've watched a billion, not billion, but a lot of soccer games there. And everybody stands near the walkway because they can get to it. So I don't know why, I mean, we should put stands over there. But anyways, I think that it's not right. Nobody here would put four sixty-foot lights in their backyard. So there you go.
Thank you. Other comments?
If there's no one else in the audience, I did have one online. And if, for anyone else online, if you're interested in, uh, participating in this public hearing, you'll have to use the raise hand feature on Zoom so you can be recognized. Um, the first person I'm seeing is Megan Sanders, who will have to unmute, thank you.
Uh, great, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful, uh, so thank you. My name is Megan Sanders and I have two children currently in the Orno School System. Um, my comments will be very brief and I don't want to belabor the points uh, that have already been made in support of this project. First and foremost, I wanna thank Laura Mitchell, uh, and those who are working on behalf of the Friends of Orno Schools entity for their leadership and stick-to-itiveness. These folks are smart, thoughtful, kind and committed to this community in ways, um, for which. I am very grateful. Second, and very importantly, completing this project communicates something really important to our children about our collective commitment to their growth and development. The investment is modest in exchange for a strong return on that investment. So I urge the planning board to endorse this project. It's smart, narrowly tailored, tailored in its current form and balances all competing interests in a way that's fair and appropriate. So for these reasons, along with those laid out by Laura and others, I see only upside for this project and enthusiastically support it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have others online?
Yes, I do have one more online. Do you want to do that now? Okay. So I have Dan Leahy and you will have to unmute.
Good evening, everyone. I'm with the, the lighting manufacturer for the project. I just wanted to just clarify a few things. One is the, all the projects that we do, the main concerns are going to be the safety of the children and also what the effect is on the properties in and around the area there. So these fixtures are all specifically aimed at a specific grid point on the fields. And we've also included, basically it's an extended visor that helps eliminate the, the light and the spill and the glare on the field and all around the surrounding areas. So as far as the, as far as the glare on the snow, there's, there's nothing that can, can measure that, if you would. But what I can say though is that, you know, these extended visors and these fixtures, these are meant specifically to keep the field lit at recommended levels for safety and also to, to help prevent any additional spill or on the surrounding areas. I also do want to mention too, is that we supply aiming diagrams where it shows each specific fixture is aimed at a specific grid point on the field. At any one time or when they're up, when the contractors are aiming these fixtures, those can be adjusted. So nothing is written in stone. I don't know if you guys, if everyone can see the design that's on the, the layout that's, that's on the screen or not, but each of those lines, actually the end of each line is where that specific fixture on that pole is aimed at. So like I said, that is not written in stone, all these aiming. So once everything is up and aimed, if for some reason, there may be areas where it, basically what I'm saying is that those fixtures, any one particular fixture can be adjusted at any time if for some reason there, we may be hitting some, you know, unexpected light in certain areas. And also too, for, I think it was Teddy Jane, I believe. So Teddy Jane, you'd mentioned, apologies if I have the name wrong, but you had mentioned what one foot candle is. So basically if you were to just, you know, turn the lights off in your, your house and, and light a, light a candle and put it on the floor, that's one foot candle. So when you're, when you're looking at, you know, point one and point three, that basically that's what you're, that's what you're looking at there. If you, I'm sure none of you've ever shopped at Target before, but you know, when you go to a Target parking lot and it's, it's, there's light out there, but it's minimum, you're looking anywhere from like, maybe that's five to seven foot candles, maybe. So just to give you an idea of what the, what the light levels are and how minimum they are at the property line. So. And I, and I actually, and I can be available at any time if anyone else had any specific questions offline. Laura will be more than happy to share my contact information too. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Meredith Diamond. I am a member of the Orno community. I am a parent. I am alongside many of you, a member of the comprehensive plan committee and also one of the co-principals of the high school. And I just wanted to share my perspective as somebody who is tremendously proud to be able to say that we are in a community and in a school district that removes barriers to opportunities and does its best to invest in the kind of learning experience that our students need. The barriers to well-being that our students face are many. And it seems like they are multiplying every year. And I am also proud to be in a school district that has its full weight behind our assertion that we do everything we can to support the full well-being of our students. And what that looks like changes every year and the challenges to that change every year. But I have never been part of a district that is more agile in its responsiveness. I am a firm believer that things grow where you water them. I am tremendously thankful that, to the Friends of Orno Schools for their dedication to the well-being of our students and their willingness to do the work that supporting that involves. This is an opportunity to water an opportunity, to, to water an availability and accessibility for the kinds of things that students need in order to counter the forces working against their well-being elsewhere. And I urge this committee to support this project. Thank you.
Brian McGill, Board Chair, RSC 26. Just wanted to add a couple of details on a couple of points. Laura already mentioned that the hockey lights are owned by the town. But it's also worth mentioning that they're grandfathered in a completely different design. They're a, I think probably a 30-year-old design. Don't think they have any shields. They don't have any upward shields for dark skies. They don't have any, they're 360 lights. They're on a switch that's accessible to citizens. So there are, you know, cases of people who come over and want to play hockey at midnight and flip the switches on. Ours is going to be behind a lockbox with, you know, a set number of staff having keys and a cell phone to come over and quickly turn lights off if there's a problem, right? So the, it's pretty different from the hockey lights. Just want to point out, there's obvious safety implications. Every year we have soccer games that try and get a game in during dusk and keep playing in the dark. You know, the refs eventually call it when it gets too dark, but they definitely push the envelope. So there are safety issues for not having the lights for these games because, you know, you have middle school, you have high school boys, high school girls, you have high school JV, high school varsity. There are a lot of games on some days to try and fit in and it just really does squeeze up against dusk by five or six o'clock at night or even 4:30 at night. And lastly, the, you know, I know the planning board got a full copy of the agreement with the budding zones. And, you know, that got put up on the, but I just want to point out that that was signed completely voluntarily. We have no leverage. We had nothing we could do to these people and say, do this or we're going to build it anyway. That's not, that, that would have been outside of zone. I imagine you wouldn't have approved it and you probably shouldn't have approved it. All of the people who signed this agreement, signed it completely voluntarily. It was after an extensive process. One of the signers was a lawyer, so they certainly had their, you know, they knew what they were doing and they were well represented. And we had significant back and forth. I think there were at least three, four, or five different versions of it. And they kept making ass about, can you put more guarantees in here and more guarantees in there? And it was, it was a very carefully negotiated, friendly, mutual agreement. And it was completely voluntarily signed and we literally had no leverage. So I don't want to speak for them, but people signed it voluntarily and several did express support for the soccer program. Thank you.
One, one point I'd like to make before you go up again. No, we're good. Is we've heard some concerns about the, the timing, the, the snow impact. Lot of discussions about soccer, not as much about skiing later into the evening. We've, we've heard a comment from, from a neighboring resident to this project. Is it imperative that you have lights on in the winter? Think it outside the box here a little bit. And so if, if there's flexibility on the timing of lighting, because my kids were avid Nordic skiers and spent more time on that field than probably most. But they, they dealt with the evening skiing as well, but I don't remember a lot of evening activities for the Nordic program. And I see my good friend Sid over there. I'm not sure that, you know, the high school skiing program really has as much of a late night commitment. So I'm just listening to concerns and wondering whether there's flexibility in the timing of when those lights go off.
Hi, my name's Matthew Powers. My, I live on Main Street and I'm on the town council. I have three children who have all been deeply involved in the Nordic ski programs here. And we've been, I'm a coach, my wife's a coach for the ski farm. The commitment for the ski farm is going to be very minimal in terms of lights on. We, when, we usually do Wednesdays. If, if you're going to get your kids out in the wintertime, when it's not dark with all the things going on, it's almost impossible because it's dark at 4:30 here. And so our programs that we can get the kids out and, and skiing, you know, is at like five to seven.
Nine PM.
Yeah, we, I, we would not be going to nine PM. We'd, we'd never gone to nine PM. Yep. The winter used to, yeah.
Yeah, I guess I, I didn't catch that.
In the agreements, we really kept it as simple as possible and just had a nine PM to dusk kind of prohibition on lighting. In the details of how we plan on using it, it's in the fall that we anticipate needing some later use potentially with soccer. But really the only evening use in the winter is for the ski farm program, which isn't a school program is why Phil, maybe you, you know, your kids, maybe it wasn't here when your kids were little. And the school program practices after school, but as, as Matt said, it's the evening program because that's when parents can get their kids to this program to participate. And it's, as Emily and others have said, usually one night a week. I think our, our sheet says two nights a week, but it sounds like it's one night a week and they go until seven, 7:15.
I don't see in the agreement, to your point, I, I see one comment about the lights will not be used between nine PM and sunrise. I don't see a mention of.
Right. We kept, in, in the agreement, we kept it simple. It year round, no later than nine. But in the finer details of how we actually plan on using it, it's different, different times of year. It's not going to be until nine PM every time we use it. So that's, that's the latest it would ever be, and that would be in the fall season. So we didn't go into, well, for, for this season, it would be seven and this other season, it would be nine in the agreements themselves. And so.
I just want to note, the administrative regulation that was also included in the meeting packet, sort of the first page of the agreements, has the additional detail that you're looking for, that 7:15 timeframe in the winter. And that's, correct me if I'm wrong, that was the administrative regulation that was adopted by the school board?
Right. And that outlines all the finer details of, of use in the administrative regulation. And then in the agreements, we just simply had a, you know, the latest it would ever be is nine. So in all the conversations we had with neighbors, that was all discussed.
Okay. But the anticipation for the winter months is, you said 7:15?
Correct. Correct.
Our program runs from, kids get dropped off at 5:30 or six between there. We ski until seven and they all get picked up by 7:15. But we're, that's when we're done and we're out of there. And that's just one, one night a week. And we can't have access to the field earlier in the day because of the middle school and high school teams practicing there as they should. So we either ski once a week on the weekend or we try to get in this evening ski as well. And like Laura mentioned, there's a hundred kids in the program from all over. So it's, it's an important program, I think, to the community and the larger community.
Understood. Very good. I just wanted also to be clear, we got a lot of people coming up. So let's again, make sure that, make sure that we keep our comments to the point, no repetition and, you know, just allow everybody a chance to speak.
I, I sense there's a lot of momentum for this. Like I sensed that before we got here tonight because there was movement going on. Maybe a win-win for all of this. The lighting is a big problem. Maybe Meredith did this with Bill Cody a couple of years ago, putting in a row of evergreens along that tree line. Many trees were taken down like three years ago when someone came in, I call it the Saturday Night Massacre. This guy showed up and just chewed up everything. Nobody was monitoring him. And a lot of trees were taken out, but Meredith and Bill put some evergreens on the far right-hand side. Maybe that's a win-win for everybody to put up a line of evergreen trees along there to help diminish some of that light. It's not to cover the tall ones, tall candle lights, but at least it reflects enough the snow. Thank you.
Yep.
It kind of is a, a quick aside. I, so I also was a ski parent, a ski farm parent. I forced my kid to do it, which is good for her. Ski farm starts at a very young age. It really is, to Laura's point, one of the first things that kids can engage in. And for like an indoor Z child that kind of was forced outside to ski, was really good for my kid. And to have those resources at a super young age to kind of expose her to things. And that was the only way we were even able to get her in a sport that young. So, and it, and like they said, it's a couple of days a week, but it starts at, how young does it start? Yeah, six or seven. It's, it's like first grade. So, you know, that's, it's really one of the first things that kids have access to in the Orno schools.
I'm Jen Perry. I am a Orno resident with a couple of kids and I mostly came up to say the same thing. I just want to point out the fact that the ski farm program is ridiculously unique opportunity for our kids in this town. I spent my entire life in New England and never had access to something like that. Not only is it unique in terms of teaching our children to ski, but for parents of younger kids, it's really, really helpful to have this at that time because you're able to come home from work and actually convey your child there. The other day is usually on the weekend. And that, in addition to the possibility for having soccer games later in the day is such a win for parents who are working full-time. Because I know a lot of my older kids, soccer teammates, parents don't get to see any of their games because we're forced to have them at 3:30 PM, which is just an insane time to try and show up for something if you have a job. And so like, it's already been mentioned, this is a really great opportunity to make the town friendlier for especially young families.
Very good. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Mike Archer. I'm the athletic administrator at Orno High School. Thank you for the opportunity. I just want to real quickly clarify the usage for us in the fall and what times those would be looking like. We certainly recognize the convenience of the four o'clock start in the afternoon for our kids. We realize that, that for, for many of our kids who don't live in Orno, that can be a hardship to have to go home and then have to try to find transportation back. So we're envisioning using these lights, you know, for maybe the Old Town game, the senior game, homecoming, to give our kids an opportunity that the football team has experienced for, you know, for decades. It's a social event. We recognize that. And, you know, it gives us some flexibility. The last three years, we have come back to school and we have had stretches of, of weather where we've gone through a heat wave. We've had, we've had some, some serious heat. And this gives us some flexibility if we would need to, instead of practicing at 3:30 or four o'clock in the afternoon to push that start time a little bit back or a game. In terms of what it allows us to do at the end of a game, I, I really compare it to what it would be like at the end of our JV football games. We start JV football games at 4:30. You know, midway through the third quarter, it starts to get dark. It gives us the flexibility for those kids to be able to finish those games. And that's the, the challenge that we're running into for our developmental teams is, is that they get through the first half and it gets too dark. And so the light usage for that would be roughly probably 40 minutes just to finish the game and then, and then be done with it. But it would just provide those kids an opportunity to get a full game in and play. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tim Tweedy. I'm an Orno resident, parent of three children, one in each of the school buildings. Just wanted to give a little insight is, I was one of the folks who were at this from, I think the first stages. When we originally started talking about this plan, the cheapest plan, as you, you know, factor in fundraising, was to be 40 foot poles. The reality is, is that the reason why they're 70 feet now is because it is less impact. And it wasn't just to me code because, you know, there were some other considerations taken in with some of the community members that, that are impacted and live in that area that didn't need to change, but we did, like moving the location of a pole because someone wanted to look out their backyard and, and see the hill in the background over, you know, facing this direction here. It didn't need to move, but I think that the outlook from this group from the very get-go was to have the least amount of impact on neighbors as possible, regardless of what the ordinances were. Um, on neighbors as possible, regardless of what the ordinances were. Um, whether that required spending extra money, um having extra thought or just listening. Um, please know that all of those things were taken into consideration. This plan has changed considerably from the get go. Um. I I appreciate, you know, uh Mr. Joseph coming up with some positive solutions and you know, that can do approach, I think is what. Um, can help things like this happen. I, you know, someone who just moved to the community three years ago, I was a former soccer coach. And we did not have the issues with it being in a residential area. So um when I was a varsity soccer coach for fourteen years, I had access to the lights anytime. I think the latest they were ever on was eight o'clock. Um, and and that was because I too wanted to get home and have a family and, you know, it it's just not necessary. Most of the opponents we play come from a great distance. A a good chunk of the games are played on Saturday afternoons. These are for the exceptions. As Mr. Archer said, I remember seeing um some games last fall. Uh, twenty minutes long because the varsity games went into overtime. And so if they're played later in the season, those parents who who get out of work to see their children play and they're twenty minutes. Um, and that happened multiple times. This just gives them a little bit more opportunity. Um, I guess the only other piece that I'll I'll mention is that uh, you know, another hat that I wear is. As a superintendent and principal at a neighboring school here. And uh they're a school choice town and I'd love to tell you that they make those choices based off of uh. The science labs and 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 the quality of the math teachers and and whatnot, but thirteen and fourteen year olds often are drawn to. The events that take place at night and what a community has to offer. Their parents are taking on other things into consideration, but that's often what draws in those thirteen and fourteen year olds. That's not happening at three thirty in the afternoon. So what, one thing that uh I think could level the playing field a little bit is is looking at opportunities like this. This is just, you know. Uh, one example, but it might draw in a few kids from a community like I work in. Um, and making sure that they know that, you know, they're they're uh, we're doing whatever we can in this community to provide the best for them.
Good, thank you.
Welcome.
All right, I do want to explore the the screening issue. This board is really consistent. Uh, with all the projects when we look at. You know, the location uh where, you know, if they're adjacent to a neighborhood, those kinds of things. And we've heard some concern this evening about uh impacts. Maybe not the zero foot candles right at the the property line, that kind of thing. But uh have you considered uh the possibility of screening again? At at a lower level, I'm not talking about. Fifty foot fences, anything like that, but any type of screening. Toward the, well, the would be the north. Northern uh side of that, those parcels. Uh. You know, just to help deflect some of that that lighter, minimize disturbance.
We haven't considered that. Uh.
Yep.
We would be open to that if that's a condition of approval. I think though it probably be dependent on property owner because one of the property owners actually wanted us to move our light pole a little so they could keep their view. So I don't think everyone wants their view obscured with trees, some may. Um, I'm not sure when this rendering was taken against the, or not the rendering, the the. Um, aerial, if it was taken before or after the Saturday Night Massacre that Don references, that was a town project that inadvertently, as you. May know, took out a lot of trees. Yeah, that, we talked with you about that with our shed, that's right. So uh we did add some trees at that time, but I, you know, I think it was limited in scope to a certain area. So um. If if that's a condition of approval, we certainly would, you know. We don't want to spend money we don't have to spend um because we're trying to put money into the the project and and other needs at the school, but. We want to see this project happen.
We we've done that on countless occasions. When we hear about uh potential impacts, that's one of the things that'll help mitigate. You know, certain undesirable uh things for certain projects and this this might be one of them.
Hello, I'm Peter Van Walsum. I'm a a budding property at Nine Mountain View. Um. Uh. I had three kids who graduated from Orno. I think Orno is a great school, wonderful. They are all skiers. No soccer players, but. Um. One thing that I've been very disappointed about in my neighborhood is the light. Uh, especially when the school put in the new um parking lot with all the additional light. Um, I'm always reminded of it when I go down to the coast. And I look at the sky and it's so dark. And you just don't get a good dark sky when you're near Orno High School. Um, especially for my house because it's. It's the house that sits right next to the pathway that goes on to the soccer field from Mountain View. And there is a floodlight that floods light onto that pathway all night long. And uh, I built my kids a, a um treehouse. And they they wanted to sleep in there at night, but when they got up there, they said, there's light all the time. Like it was, the light was shining over the house onto the treehouse. They couldn't get sort of the dark experience of. Of uh, of having a treehouse like that. And uh, and certainly the uh, the ice shrink is great. I love the ice shrink. I've used it. And uh, those lights are really annoying. Um, and they're farther away than the lights will be on the uh soccer field. So. I uh, I retain my dislike for for light pollution. I think it's really sad that we don't have good dark skies here in Orno. At least not in this neighborhood. Uh, but I love the Orno schools. I think they're really positive environment for all the kids, especially the athletics, I think, because. Um, you know, the high school I went to had five hundred kids per class, so good luck getting onto a team. And if you're an Orno High School student, you can probably get onto some kind of team, some kind and participate. I think that's really valuable for the kids. Um. And uh, in skiing, I love to ski. And snow is so precious that I think actually having light when you could ski when there's snow is a good thing because it's not always gonna be that way. So I'm torn. I I I signed the the agreement. I'm in favor of it in that sense, but uh. Uh, if I could have my way, I'd like to see a lot of hooding of the lights over the uh parking lot. And maybe some of the spotlights around the school that.
Can only, we're we're reviewing just the project in front of us this evening.
Yeah, I know.
We've heard a lot of things and I know our assistant town manager is in the back of the room. So I I think Mitch, you've heard comments about the hockey rink. Now you're hearing some other stuff, so that's a whole nother issue. Um, I would like to limit this.
Sure.
Again, just to the discussion that's in in front of us this evening.
It's what drives my motivation to speak out.
Thank you. Any more comments before discussion? Yeah. Very good. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Uh, comments from the board. So we, again, as is our practice, when we hear comments about the impact on. Other neighbors, uh some people, six people signed an agreement. But there is concern about uh some of the, you know, the impacts from properties farther away. Uh, these lights are up on a pole. The one thing we have at our disposal is to consider screening. And we have done this a number of times in the past. So what are your thoughts on the potential for screening?
Soccer field and the hockey room, there isn't room there for having trees.
No.
And that strikes me as the area where perhaps it's most needed. So the question then is, do we want to put screening in the other areas?
This is a slippery slope. I don't want to go too far down this. The concerns we've heard have been mostly from the Mountain View side of that. Is it, the soccer field is is what it is. I'd like to limit our discussion about whether screening is needed from the proposed light posts for for the soccer field and some Nordic activity.
We have this area where the two fields come together.
Yeah.
So that that's involved the soccer field.
Yeah.
But if it's mostly Mountain View.
Yep.
Then obviously that there is air, there are, there is room there for screening.
Mm-hmm. Bob, what do you think?
Can we offer the option of uh screening for those that might want it? Because that's, some people may may like that view of of the fields. That's a direction we can go. Yeah. Uh, John, what do you think?
I think Bob's got a good point there.
Yep.
I like the idea of screening.
Yeah.
Yeah, me too. And and also just to make it clear that in the wintertime, the likelihood of lights after seven fifteen is.
It seems pretty minimal.
Yeah.
All right, Ashley.
I'm I'm kind of torn on screening. Um, I'm having a hard time imagining where you would put that, where it wouldn't upset some people. And I'm also concerned about the cost of screening for the amount of time and impact. Right? So I would, I would want to know what the cost of that screening is because it sounds like the biggest problem we would need to screen for isn't this project that we're looking at. It's an existing problem that's outside of the scope of this proposal and. Right? Like what is the cost of the screening for a dozen, two dozen, three dozen nights of?
Cost of screening, that's not really one of our review criteria, so.
I know.
Yeah, so we're not gonna consider that.
Okay.
Yeah, we, that's just not, not one of our review criteria. So we're looking at impacts, the neighbor, neighbors on this.
Right.
Responding to those comments. But, you know, as a result of this project, if neighbors have expressed enough concern. That some screening is warranted, then the school would have to deal with that, but. We're not gonna price out.
Right.
Yeah.
But uh what I'm saying is it's, it feels like a a large project to undertake, to have a lot of screening for a again, a couple of nights. I don't, I don't know. I I would want to hear from everybody, right? Like some people really don't want the screening. Right? So have you opt into screening some properties and not screening others? Obscuring the view for some and not others.
Good, good question. Mike?
The only addition, um. The only concern for lighting seems to be in the wintertime with the reflection off the snow that has been presented. Under that, the seven fifteen time, you also mentioned partial field lighting may be sufficient. So it may be that not all those lights need to be on. Because just because of the with the reflection off the snow. Okay.
All right, Isabel. I'm just trying to, and we've been creative before. So with applicants, we've had them work, you understand what the issues are and you basically can come to a decision. So that this board isn't prescribing what specific screening you're gonna put in place. That you actually work with your neighbors uh and come up with a solution so that we're not dictating what that answer is. So so that's an option. We've done that on many occasions. But I think you've heard that some people have a concern uh about what this project is doing. I don't think anybody's arguing the benefits of of what extended time for JV soccer. I've seen all that. I've lived all of your discussions through my kids in in high school, so I've been there. But our role is to. Evaluate the benefit, the benefits of this project, make sure it meets town ordinance ordinances and listen to concerns from the public. So we've got a lot of positives, but we've heard a couple of negatives. Uh, we've got two neighbors, well, actually one signed the agreement and one didn't. And they mentioned that that they're representing their their neighborhood, so. I'm trying to address those concerns or we're trying to address those concerns. So I'm wondering what kind of options we have to include a condition uh that that might address this.
So I just want to clarify so that I have an adequate understanding of what you're hoping for. Are you hoping for screening completely along sort of the north?
Be behind the softball field, just I it what it sounds like to me. I know where the Josephs live, you know, up that way. You know, so you see the the sidewalk that goes to Mountain View.
Mm-hmm.
And I I think it appears, because there's, there's a pretty significant row of trees, but if there's a a gap there moving forward, but. I, you know, I don't want to say exactly where every potential tree is gonna go, but I I think we can. Come up with a condition where the applicant can work with neighbors to come up with something that's suitable. So that this board isn't prescribing exactly what it's gonna be there. And as I heard, this could be a a win-win for. Everybody.
I would feel, I would, I'll just tell you from a legal and legality standpoint, protecting the town from liability. I would feel most comfortable if it was focused on a specific property owner that has provided comment this evening rather. Or 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 the specific property owners that are called out as being impacted.
Yeah.
Um, rather than a general note to discuss with all property.
There's a limit to this. It's not that everybody in the Mountain View neighborhood is gonna get a new row of trees. But I'm looking at the ones that are directly impacted from this that might, might be impacted if it's winter glare or something like that. Screening is a quite a common tool that planning boards can use to minimize impacts.
Yeah, I would focus on the the couple of property owners that we've heard, um their specific feedback if this is the will of the board.
Right.
Yeah.
And we've done that in the past. If you remember the. What was the, the auto, the garage?
Right.
Yeah, were they actually, what's that? Yeah, the shed was one and then we also had the the building by uh lead betters, you know, that.
Yeah, that whole university.
Yeah, and there's the auto dealer, the used car dealer in town. We had them. Yeah, we had them work with a neighbor to come up with something that's suitable. That's kind of what we're looking at here. So. If that seems reasonable, a condition, a condition of approval with the people that have asked for screening. That the applicant worked with them to come up with with something that's reasonable and uh would help minimize impact. Are we okay with that?
Satisfaction, does this need to be done? Because.
Well, it's a reasonable request, you know. No, I, I agree. We can't let this go too far, but I don't want this planning board saying you need five trees or this and that. You know, we've done this in the past where we've encouraged applicants to work with neighbors, be a good neighbor. This this project. Clearly has an impact on a lot of different people, so they can hopefully come to an agreement so that we're not. Telling, you know, that that's what the applicant is supposed to do. Come up with a solution to these things. I don't want the planning board dictating what specific screening will be. That's consistent with how we operate on.
It seems to me to. To have a, an endpoint so that we know, we don't need to know, but. Part of this requirement needs to be that somebody signs off and yes, it's, this thing has been accomplished.
Agreed.
Is the code and office, code enforcement officer the likely person for this?
I was going to say, suggest either myself or the code enforcement officer or both, if that makes you feel more comfortable.
Again, using the the auto uh used car dealer. The the applicant worked with a neighbor to come up with a buffer that was reasonable. It worked really slick. We've done this on several occasions. This does not need to be open ended. I'm not saying that the Josephs are gonna ask for fifty foot high fences, but they've expressed a concern. As a board, we're responsible to to address those concerns. So. And we, you know, this is the approach we've taken in the past.
I'm not saying we should get involved, but somehow it seems to me. It needs, somebody needs to be tasked with saying this thing has been accomplished and in the past it did get accomplished nicely.
Correct.
Say, say. This is still, this issue is still hanging. Is that gonna hold up the whole project for six months or something?
I don't envision that.
Arguments about things.
Isabel, I'd like, how can we craft this so that we're meeting the the intent of?
I would suggest that the condition is worded quite specifically in terms of addressing the specific comment at hand. And that it would be a row of evergreen. Uh, buffer to the satisfaction of the town planner for this specific parcel.
Works for me.
Yep, good idea.
You okay with that? All right, uh. Yes, we're gonna do that. So the properties we've heard from, right now, we've got the the Josephs property. Uh, every, other butters have signed off. Have we heard any more? I'm not aware of any. Yep.
Well, a comment was made that I'm, I'm, I think, um, you said that you were speaking for other neighbors, so I wouldn't want to necessarily say.
Right, but we have to have a limit.
Okay, no, I I get it. I just, I'm just thinking if 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 we do something for the Josephs and then someone else shows up and say, hey, what what about me?
They've had an opportunity, uh how, I've seen this, everybody got public notice.
Fine.
Uh, you know, opponents and proponents have showed up. And we're responding to those specific concerns.
Okay, that's fine.
I think we can limit that. All right, any other concerns? I think we've been, lighting was the big deal. I heard enough on the wall, so I'm okay with that. That's gonna be removed. So. Are we good? I think we're ready, ready for. Actually, we have to vote on waivers first, so there's a series of waivers.
I had noted that they were simply not applicable to the project.
Okay, so in proposed findings of fact, that's covered.
Yes.
Very good. All right, so I think I'm ready for a motion with that one additional condition. Take a crack at it.
All right, well, help me with the wording. I move to approve the site plan application of. Yeah, of Cho Enterprises revised through February thirteenth, twenty twenty five to install lighting, a retaining wall and corresponding drainage improvements adjacent to the Orno High School soccer fields. At fourteen Goodrich Drive, tax map twenty seven, lot twelve, per the findings of fact dated nineteen, March nineteen, twenty twenty five, subject to the following conditions. That. The property owners who have mentioned their concerns about lighting. Will reach an agreement with the town planner about screening foliage.
And the applicant, they have to be involved.
And the applicant has to be involved with that discussion.
Yep.
Is that good?
That's, that's. Yes.
All right. Very good. We have a motion. We have a second from Bob.
Second.
Very good. Two seconds, wow. Bonus. All right, all those in favor? Very good. All right. Next up, moving on, we have another public hearing this evening. This is for a minor site plan review of Sean Casey doing business as Casey's Lawn Service for a storage. Please, we have another application. All right, we have another application this this evening. This is a minor site plan review of Sean Casey doing businesses. Casey's Lawn Service for a storage bin and roof structure for existing storage bins for landscaping material at one nineteen Kelly Road. Tax map thirty lot thirteen in the EDZ zoning district. Isabel, you want to give a summary?
Yes. Well, first off, thank you for hanging around. The applicant is with us this evening. The applicant is Sean Casey doing business as Casey's Lawn Service. The proposal before you is a minor site plan review to construct a storage bin for landscaping material and put a roof over a structure. Over one of the existing storage bins that's on site. It's in the EDZ and it's tax map thirty lot thirteen. I think this hand drawn site plan here actually gives you a much better idea of what's going on here. So. There's some existing material bins where my cursor is when you sort of come in from Kelly Road. There's a new bin being proposed off of the gravel parking area for ease of access to his employees. And that's the extent of it. But the reason that this is before you this evening, this is sort of to correct a, an actually, actually a longstanding. Business at this site. So as we always hope with our businesses in Orno, he had originally started as a sort of home occupation. It has grown significantly where he has a number of employees as detailed in the letter included with the application materials and. It's sort of, for lack of a better term, flew under the radar until he came forward with a permit and then we realized that we needed to to appropriately permit this through site plan review. Because of the nature of the business. I do also want to note that there is an existing residence on site, so this is being permitted as a group development under those standards. Because there's two principal uses of the property. So in terms of unique issues, there are no specific buffer strips required. There is landscaping that exists that's sort of shown here. So this is a view from Kelly Road looking into the driveway. There is an adjacent residential property to the, essentially the right of this image, and you can see going further down. That there is an existing sort of, this is, this area here is the existing. Bins for the storage area. The planning board does have the authority to require an additional buffer between this residential property or the F and A district boundary that's in the rear. So going back to this. Overview approximately here where my cursor is, the. Zone of this overall property changes from EDZ to F and A. So the planning board has the authority to put in a, require a buffer there, but it is all owned by the applicant. Staff considers the existing landscaping and the buffer areas to be more than adequate for the area. The site is currently developed as, again, a landscaping business with a garage and a residence. There are some wetlands near the rear of the project site just from available town GIS mapping. They haven't been formally delineated. But there are no known rare or exemplary habitats located within the development area. And I just, I should note that those wetlands are at the far rear of the overall site, not near this development area. The disturbances are limited to the already developed areas adjacent to the existing gravel parking area. And there are no disturbances to wetlands or removal of trees proposed. In terms of traffic access and parking, the applicant has submitted a letter sort of detailing additional information about their business. It, they indicate that they currently have around five employees working regularly on weekdays through the busy season of April to November. Daily trips both into and out of the site would consist of employees showing up to work. And they typically show up by seven AM, so before that typical morning peak hour of seven AM to nine AM. And then they leave shortly after in company trucks. There might be a few other trips into and out of the site throughout the workday depending on work being done. Any other traffic would include delivery vehicles once a day on most weekdays, bulk material delivery trucks a couple of times a week. And then a few trips in and out for personal vehicles of those living in the home that's also located on site. So in total, you can expect about forty total trips. That's both entering and exiting on the site most days during the busy season. That April to November and then approximately ten trips in the off season. There are no sidewalks in the vicinity of the project site. The business does not see customers on site, so no pedestrian access is required or proposed. And access continues to be from that Kelly Road driveway that I showed. In terms of drainage, stormwater erosion control, the proposal is for that new storage bin for landscaping material and a roof for one of the existing bins. This shouldn't present a significant amount of flow and wouldn't be significant enough to warrant any stormwater management, especially given the existing vegetated buffer areas between this and adjacent properties. Any erosion control is required to be implemented under main DEP's best management practices. There's no lighting or signage proposed. The property is currently served by a septic system and well, I believe. The, there are no impacts to the existing sewer and water supply with this application and no additional utilities are proposed or required. A number of the items have been determined to not be applicable. I detailed those in my review memo and staff is in agreement with those items. And then in terms of conditions, well, I should say staff is recommending approval with just our four standard conditions.
Very good. Anything, Dad?
John Casey, I would just make one note. There will be a few trees that do need to be cut for the new bin area. It's currently borders sort of that wooded area, but we're talking like. Bob trees of like. You know. Not, 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 nothing significant, but I didn't want to get in trouble for cutting one tree if it said I wasn't going to cut any trees.
No, thank you. Thank you for your honesty. That is only my own misunderstanding.
Very good. So before we open up all you guys in the audience, before we open up the public hearing, we'll limit comments from the board. It looks like a pretty good buffer between you, your your new shed. I mean, putting a roof on the other one, that's pretty simple.
Yeah.
But you got a pretty good buffer between you and the neighbor.
Yeah.
It looked like from the pictures I saw.
Yes, yeah. And it's changed a little bit since that picture, but that's just because my neighbor put in a whole bunch of, they they did that garage. And they put in a septic system back there, but that's all obviously on their property, but it looks more open now. That's on their side of that property line. But if you were to actually go there and look or whatever.
So this is a project where we don't really need to think about screening as much versus some others that we've considered. So. Questions from the board? I I have none.
No.
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 I'm sorry, I have done.
All right, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Jessica, I'm sorry, Jessica, this is old school. Isabel, if you can, all those people with their hand up online.
There's no one with their hand raised online.
All right. Come on, Dad. All right.
No luck.
Last call for audience. Close public hearing. Any further comments? All right, I think we're ready for a motion. You're up.
I guess, okay. I move that we approve the proposed, the site plan review. For Sean Casey DBA, Casey's Lawn Service Site Plan Review. One nineteen Kelly Road, tax map thirty lot thirteen, March nineteenth, twenty twenty five, with the usual standard conditions.
Very good. Thank you. Take it a second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Congratulations on your business.
Yeah, all those in favor? Very good. We should have put you first. Sorry, bud.
No worries. Thank you.
All right, next up, old business. This isn't on our agenda and I didn't ask to change this, but I do want to take the opportunity, those of you who noticed that. We no longer have Jessica sitting down at the end of the bench. She has moved on to. Different pastors. She's now the assistant planner for the town of Freeport. So she's been pursuing a master's degree and her project was actually, I talked to her about it. I was. Thrilled that she did this, but she studied interconnectivity issues in the town of Orno based on their experiences through planning board, which I. That was pretty cool, but I do want to publicly acknowledge the the work that she had done. She was outstanding in her preparation of materials and I I want to take the opportunity to wish her well. She. I emailed her this morning down in Freeport just to pass along, congrats, but she lamented the fact that we didn't have a February meeting so that she could. Say a proper goodbye, but did a great job. So. Either way, she will be missed, but Isabel, you're, I guess the town is looking to to fill that position as we speak, so.
We shouldn't have let her leave. We proved that.
Yeah, tough shoes to fill. So either way, good luck, Jessica. So planner report, what do we got?
Okay, so I do have one item to note, and this is more, this has come up because of a question from our town attorney. So. In the recent past, the code enforcement officer has been approving projects within the shoreline area that typically. According to our shoreline ordinance, would require planning board review to determine that setbacks have been met from the water to the greatest practical extent. I'm seeing that this has, I looked back at agendas for years and years. We've had some conversations internally. I cannot find record of the planning board ever actually reviewing something like this. That being said, the advice that we've received from our town attorney is that in the shoreline zoning ordinance. The planning board is able to designate someone to review those things. And we would recommend that the planning board designate the code enforcement officer who has been doing this work. But it would require a bylaw amendment on the advice of our town attorney. So in order to accomplish that, I just wanted to bring that up for your knowledge and the.
Prepare us something for next meeting.
Yes, that would be great.
Good answer.
Okay.
All right, any other projects for next month?
I have a couple of things in the fire, so I'm, we will likely have a meeting. I just don't know which one will be deemed to complete first, so.
Okay, thank you. Next up, adjournment.
Second.
Very good. All those in favor? Be in a month.